Mayor.
Here.
Mayor Rose Tim Rennick. Alderman McDray. Alderman McDermott.
Here.
Alderwoman Jones.
Here.
Alderwoman Joseph.
Here.
And Mayor.
Alderwoman Jones.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight, we lift up our hearts in gratitude for the privilege of serving this wonderful community. We thank you for the dedicated leadership who guide us with wisdom and compassion. We pray for your guidance and blessings upon the mayor, council members, and all of those entrusted with the responsibility of making decisions for Jamaica Beach. Grant them the strength to lead with integrity, the wisdom to discern what is right, and the compassion to serve all members of our community equitably. May your presence be felt in every discussion, decision, and action taken during this meeting and beyond. Help us work together harmoniously for the betterment of all. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, do any council members see a conflict of interest with any of the items on board? All right. We have one public speaker tonight.
I know you're tired of hearing from me. I talk to a lot of people just not myself. A lot of the neighbors always reach out to me, and so I try to say what they were thinking, I guess you could say. During, I know we're not talking about taxes tonight, so I'm talking about everything else.
Please speak your name here.
Paul Winch, one six five three one Mansfield, Jamaica Beach, eight three zero nine nine eight two zero four four. In the last council meeting, Mr. McDermott changed his vote from no new taxes to the highest taxes that he could charge Jamaica Beach citizens. When I reached out there, he said he changed his vote because of what Francis said and what his dad had to say earlier. And besides, it's just twenty-five dollars more for five hundred thousand evaluation of your house. But we heard that three years ago, when it was just fifteen dollars more when our house was three hundred thousand. And last year, just a small amount when it was a house of four hundred thousand. Now my house is close to five hundred thousand and it's twenty-five dollars. Meanwhile, that fifteen dollars is now twenty-five dollars. This twenty-five dollars will be thirty dollars next year. And that's never going to go down. That's always going to be year after year after year. City's not going to reduce your taxes. We know that. Okay, also, on top of that, your evaluation of your flood insurance and your wind insurance is all evaluated from the evaluation of your house. My flood insurance went up a hundred bucks this year. Your wind insurance is going up thirteen percent. Even though a lot of us went down and talked before the board down at the tree month, they voted to raise the wind insurance another ten percent on top of that just for future hurricanes. So some of you in me in our house is going to be paying three, four, five thousand dollars in wind insurance on top of your taxes and on top of your county taxes and everything else. Now this budget, if y'all had a little bit more time and Kendall would have gave y'all a little bit of time to give this to y'all earlier, I feel like y'all could have cut fifty thousand dollars out of this budget easily. But just a few, looking at a few strokes of pen here and there. But nobody just popped up and, oh, yes, 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 no problem. They didn't question anything in this budget. So I'm asking y'all, so look at this budget again, rewrite certain items in this budget, stay within the new tax increase, or at least consider insurance option of half of that increase instead of the whole. Because it don't seem like a whole lot, twenty-five dollars, but I'm paying close to six hundred dollars a month just in taxes and insurance to live in my house that is paying for it. And eventually, a lot of people that have moved from there to Jamaica Beach or moved from the coast, but they just came forward, the insurance or the taxes, just take that into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, we have no special presentations tonight. Although I'd like, I should have warned y'all, Rick, I see you wore your sunglasses for the new glare in the room with the freshly cleaned walls.
He wears goggles.
No, I would say I didn't. I think y'all have noticed, but we did, as long as we were taking the floor out and redoing, and once we really got the room empty, we realized how tired I am. This is the wall sore. So anyway, I hope you notice and appreciate the new brightness. Anyway, announcements, we're having a budget hearing on September twelfth, and then the tax rate hearing will be on September twenty-sixth with approval of the proposal, is approval of that tax rate, and approval of the budget at that time also. So please let citizens be aware that we will be going over the budget in a lot of detail for those meetings as we work the final, the more final thing. All right, reports from directors. All right, city administrator Francis.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to start off by thanking Broscop Truth, one one zero one three seven, and I want to say they're out of sight, I believe that's right, for the new trash bag dispensers that have been installed on the beach. They're eco-friendly, biodegradable trash bags, and this is their Silver Award project. And so they will maintain that or those dispensers. There's currently five of them, and six of them will be placed on the beach as soon as we install a pole for that new disposal. So it's going to, it's going to help with our intent for people to pack it in and pack it out. So we're thankful for that. Also, just a reminder that the elevator will remain out of service for one more week. If all goes well this weekend, they believe that they can have the inspection as Friday, and then we'll have a, have a new elevator back in service. At your desk, there, you're going to see a couple of financial things that you would ask for the third quarter account summary. It's going to show your account balances or investment balances, and there's also a printout of a, of the new twenty, or the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget in a rolled-up form. Mayor, you would ask to see what that might look like. So I have printed those out, and I will provide both of them to you electronically as well. Also, I wanted to mention that when it was yesterday, we had, the county health district was here to inspect the swimming pool for their annual inspection, and we notified you, so I'm happy to report that. So thank you to Tina and Mike and their staff for the work they do there. Beach nourishment. Robert and I had a, we sent in on a call today, a pretty, a pretty big proposal meeting, and there were nine contractors that were on the call, so they have some good interest in that project. And we're told to expect that the project will be awarded by the end of next month, so we're moving right along with that. And then the final thing, strategic plan. Our next session, I asked for some input about that, and we have tentatively scheduled it for Thursday, September fifth. That is an off-council week. I would say probably six o'clock. I haven't, I haven't said that.
We plan on running it like a council meeting.
Okay.
Six and, you know, shut down eight-thirty, kind of regardless of the, it might go on to nine if we're close to wrapping something up.
So we'll, we'll work hard to finish that up, but please mark your calendar for Thursday, September fifth, six o'clock. That's all I have. I stand for questions if you have. And then just for, just so you know, the carpet just arrived late this afternoon, so we'll start installing it tomorrow.
What color is it?
It is a blue with some, some neutral tones in it as well.
Yeah, it'll be an improvement. Let's see, I have one question. So how are the temporary pack it in, pack it out signs holding up?
Yeah, they're holding up good, well, with equipment on, on the mile fifteen mile road. Park board came and moved some sand around, so we're going to have to re-adjust it so they can see that sign there. It's kind of covered, but it's working much to my surprise.
Everybody's surprised. And I know we were planning to let it go through Labor Day, and then I guess at some point in conjunction with our each-year discussion, we'll, we'll talk about more permanent signage around the pack it in, pack it out to get it through the winter anyway.
One of those lines where the grill scalp stands are, where we have little signs being made, these are provided for you to take home here, take you travel.
A reminder that it goes on with. All right. Next is our approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting on eight, eight twenty-two, if there are no requests for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All in favor of approving the minutes from the regular city council meeting? All right. Okay, comments and reports from members of council. I think Miss Joseph, you do. You're up.
I don't have anything, but I just want to thank y'all because I had my mother's medical emergency, so I was, I was leave there a little bit, so I appreciate your support for allowing me that time. So I'm just catching back up. So I have nothing to report, so.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. My volunteers and I have been busy packaging and sharing stuff for our troops. I've had twelve flags drop off at my house, and we are busy packing them down. That's going to be six hundred stars. If you want to volunteer, please contact me or contact city hall, and they'll let you know how to get ahold of me, but my number is four zero nine six eight two five five zero seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, no.
Sorry. I don't think really other than I just think the lifeguards at the pool did a great job this year. I know that they're closing on the weekdays now, and only a few more weekends left, but I felt like they really paid attention. They were nice to everyone that came to the pool, including my family every time, so they did a good job.
I know we talked about it at one point, and then I didn't act on it. Let's remember next February timeframe to key up the discussion about swim lessons.
I believe the hurricane meant the bar's good.
It did. We got a little distracted. So, because I've had, I've had several young families ask me, is there any way that we could do or allow swim lessons in the town? With enough advertising feedback up front, I think we could probably attempt to accommodate that. Yeah. So, okay, remind your.
Yes.
Courtney. All right, thank you. Okay, next to old business, we're teeing up again discussion and consideration of new building permit fees. So I think, do I have a motion to discuss the new building permit?
Oh, I'll make the motion to discuss.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right.
Okay, at your, at your seat, you should have Katie put together a packet that is highlighted, and she's highlighted the changes that we have made. This is what was in existence at the last meeting, and so following, following all the discussion we had at the last meeting, we went through and made some edits to it to remove duplicated language. We, just if you look at page two, you'll see anything that's highlighted there, those, those have been removed. That's the, that's the wording that has been removed. If we'd have been thinking we'd have put together a redline document before we, and we didn't. So, so we went back, and this is our best version of a redline document that we could do. So the shutters and the gutters, the ceiling, I know there was a lot of discussions about common household replacements, ceiling fans, those types of things. And from the discussion, we changed that to be new, if it was, if you were replacing existing, then we were, we were not asking for permits. But if it, if it was like new installations, then that's when we were, then we would be asking for permits. Remove the duct replacement. Page three, you'll see the highlights, remove AC drains, bathtub showers, water heaters, roof drains, floor sinks, some of the common things that, common repairs that we talked about. Page five, we did add, we did add verbiage that we had talked about in the meeting about giving the building purpose some discretion in, in these, in discretion in issuing these permits. You'll also see the prices were reduced on the electrical, the general electrical, the general gas and plumbing, and the HVAC. We reduced those pricings because there was concerns about those were too high. Page six, prices include plan review fee. That was, we just moved that to a different location. We also reduced the price of a fence permit because we don't believe that fences need to be inspected, and so we brought that from the three hundred back to the one twenty-five. And the swimming pool was kind of out on an island by itself, so we relocated it, but we're into a spot that it better fits. And then having reviewed the tape of the meeting and everything, we went through, and we think we addressed everybody's concerns. Katie worked very hard this week to try to put this together, to make it sensible for everyone, and I know there was a lot of concerns about, like I said, what you would consider typical homeowner repairs and maintenance type projects that we're not, we're not overreaching. We're, we're trying to be, use common sense approach to what needs a permit, but we also want to balance that with safety of our community and make sure that, you know, what is being built today and repaired today is to code and withstand the test of time. So we really think that, you know, we've, we've addressed all the, all the problems, and this is about our fourth time bringing this forward. So we're, we're hoping to put this to bed tonight, if at all possible. So I, I guess I would, I would add, I would stand for some questions. We've had a chance to read through it this, over the weekend. Was there anything that we missed?
Kendall, can you explain the, what you mean on page five, the deductions and additions can be made at the discretion of the building permit? That's pretty vague.
Well, the, from the, from the discussion at the la, the last meeting, we felt that the council was, was entrusting Katie with some discretion as, as, you know, if, if she felt that something didn't absolutely need a, a permission. And I'll give you an example of something that happened. We had someone come ask about a, what do we call it? A government permit following the storm, and it, the date, we said that September first would be the, you know, anything before, or anything before August first, we would, we would not charge a fee for. This person showed up a week late to do a, to do a simple project, and I told Katie that at her discretion, if she wanted to waive that fee, you know.
And it was prepared based on here, based on here.
Yeah, that, that she had the authorization to do that. So it's those types of common sense stuff. She can't, she can't increase the fee beyond the, beyond the limits that we provide here, but she does have discretion to reduce it for common sense things. So if we, if she, someone was coming in to do a remodel and they were, they weren't going to be, they were only going to do plumbing. You know, our, our set fee covers plumbing, electrical, and HVACC permitting in that. She would have the authority to reduce that fee accordingly because some of those trades were not going to be included in the job that was being done. That, that's kind of, that's what we're aiming for. She doesn't, she doesn't have the ability to increase the fee beyond this schedule. But she does have, she does have the ability to reduce it based on the works and the scope of the work that's actually being done.
Okay, and can you keep track of it, you know, somehow and make a note to that permit when, when it's done? Did she add a note to it that she, on this date, decided to, to?
Yes, all of, all of, all of that will be notated.
A form of documentation. That way, I think, too, to your point, Kenz, I was thinking about lots of consistency, because if you do it one for one, will it be the same for anybody else in that same, in that same opportunity or position? Would they do it the same? Would she use that same judgment for somebody else that was in that home?
So there's a, I mean, there's always a little bit of that concern when, when you empower people to do things. But I also entrust and empower them, you know, trust them with that empowerment. But in our, in our new building permit software, there will absolutely be places to, to make those types of notations so that you can specify those adjustments that were made in the law.
And I'm sorry, Kendall, is there a place, I'm sorry, is there a place that maybe someone, a peer, like a peer review or someone that's over, that can initial it, that they've approved it? That way, there's some kind of oversight with it? Even another employee?
But so she works in tandem with our building official, so who would be David Eagle, and, you know, she, she relies a lot on his, on his experience and knowledge, and I don't think she just arbitrarily makes these kinds of decisions. So I don't know that there's specific protocol to do that. And again, this is, this is something we, we gleaned from the discussion, and it can be easily taken out. I mean, if that's not really what the council wants, so we can.
The bigger, the bigger piece was along the renovation line. At, at a flat sixteen hundred dollars, you know, if, if you're not doing very much, sixteen hundred dollars. That's the main point that this was around. You know, we used to just do it per square foot, but frequently that didn't cover all the different trades and inspections that had to take place. So on a smaller one, but sixteen hundred can be too high for a larger one. That's what the, that is what the discretionary conversation was around.
But just is to have someone be oversight with it, so she's not making those decisions alone?
It wouldn't be very often, I can't imagine. No, but then, you, you don't want to, you don't want to create systems that hold up people getting permits either. So.
Could she get it from, from, say, the city secretary or from the city administrator? They would be nearby.
But if, if there was going to be somebody, it would either have to be the building official or the city administrator.
Yes. The other show had knowledge.
That position answers the city administrator. And the building official is the only other person who would be certified to have that type of knowledge.
I mean, I'm trying to think of the solution here. What's coming to mind is two options. One would be just a quick form that gets filled out if she's not charging the listed price. And then, you know, that just goes in a file, right, with the, with the permit or whatever. And we could, we could require that form to have your approval.
Yeah, it's like a variance, it's like a variance form.
And.
What if the person asking for a reduction fills out a form? It's just, I'm not, I'm not doing a big project. I'm only going to be utilizing, I mean, I'd like to apply for the reduction, and that gets initialled.
I would say that we could, we could have a little variance form, and, and on that variance form, it could, it could require just a brief description of why. I'm not envisioning it occurring very often. So.
I'm just looking for more documentation of why.
Well, it will, it will help eliminate any questions in the future about favoritism or why for him, not for me, that, that might occur.
The other thing.
We could also, the other thing that was popping in my head, Kendall, is we could also, you know, I don't know, upon remodel additions, we could have a sliding scale. If it's a five hundred dollar, five hundred square foot addition, it's this much. If it's over that, it's this much.
You know, my other thought is, they can just reduce the price to sixteen hundred, you reduce the price by, and just charge an additional for the, the MVPs that you need, whether it's mechanical, electrical, plumbing, or it's all three, two to three, or whatever that, whatever that is.
Interesting, yeah.
A la cartes style. Yeah, so.
Yeah, make it a flat five hundred dollars for remodels and additions, and then, and then add on the other items that's appropriate.
Yeah, so everything else that's included in that plan review, the road usage, inspections, the CSI certificate, you know, the thing is, like I said, we got the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, which is three, four fifty, you know, so if you wanted to just make it, you know, eleven fifty.
But we could also leave the proposed price at sixteen hundred, or you could say, or do it on the right, because she has the option of pricing it at the sixteen hundred or pricing it at each of the elements that are required, and whichever is cheaper is what they can go with.
Well, a la carte's only going to be four fifty, right? Well, I guess if you have to review or.
Well, actually, actually, if you reduce it by three hundred, because you're going to have one of those, you're going to have a mechanical or a, or a plumbing.
Yes.
Now, then if you need the other two, that's what I'm thinking, if you make it thirteen hundred for the flat fee, and then if you need
Or how about?
One or two of the other ones, you would add on to that.
How about if we did this? How about if we made it a minimum or a dollar per square foot, whichever is more? I mean, I added on a lot of square footage to my house, and I sure would have preferred this price, right? So that would, it would still give us more revenue for really large additions, because we have a lot of people that are doubling their house and tripling their house, you know? I'm just throwing out ideas, but we could, we could make it a, a dollar per square foot, but with a minimum. So if I'm doing a hundred square foot addition. So if I'm doing a hundred square foot addition, I still have to pay five hundred dollars. Or, you know, whatever that addition would typically add up with, with what we needed. Or you could do.
I think it was trying to stay true to the nature of this plan, but you're saying that thirteen, thirteen hundred, I guess, plus. Cause you could either be playing thirteen hundred, or if you wanted to get this full sixteen hundred, it would be using all the MVP services.
If you needed all three of those permits, you know, it's either gonna be thirteen hundred, fourteen fifty, or sixteen hundred.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Yes, we would write it as thirteen hundred plus additional MVP services, basically.
Yeah, um, yeah. I'm trying to think how we would actually say, yeah, so, um, yeah, thirteen hundred and then, um. Said it's just depending on if they needed one or two of the other, of the other trades.
Yeah.
As, as to what that price could be. And maybe it's that, maybe it's thirteen hundred one trade, fourteen fifty two trades, sixteen hundred three trades.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
And then do away with the line that was added, reductions in the addition.
Yes, and then we'll, then we'll reduce that.
We could do away with that.
Yes.
Cause I think that my memory is that that was the only section.
Yes.
That felt maybe some discretion was needed and wasn't charged.
So this is much cleaner. It protects, Katie, we'll never have to worry whoever's in that position for the future.
And you don't have to have a separate process or a separate, a separate form. Okay. So we'll bring it up for both next time? Hopefully.
Can we, can we, can we pass it down a minute?
Do we pass it now? Well, I do, I do have a comment. We don't have approved in our agenda. I didn't vote this out before.
Seriously? No, it's open business, discussion. Oh, my goodness.
I, I missed that, Kendall.
I missed that.
Oh, wow, yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't know that we can approve it because it's not on the agenda to.
To. No, we'll have to wait.
That's absolutely my mistake.
And then we can see the final, we can do that, Kate, too, then.
Okay. No, we just had it in discussion and consideration. So once we've had a discussion and the consideration.
Now it can be back on the business scene.
Yeah, now we just move right on to it. I don't know, it was at one point, but for approval, can we, can we reference that one again?
No.
Okay. It's the rules, just checking. Alright, on to new business.
Do we have to officially welcome Gil in, anyway?
You, okay, twenty-two? Yep, I know you did.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the video too. Thank you. Okay, on to new business. The first item is discussion and consideration of the beach user fee timeline. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion to discuss, making consideration of the beach user fee timeline.
Do I have a second? Okay, I think you guys thought it, you have.
Yeah, so.
Take us through all the steps you sent out this week?
Well, I will try. Um, at, at your desk, you should have, um, a copy of a projected timeline, it should look like this, that I, uh, just sent out. It is not in the packet, but it is. So this was my attempt at, uh, um, putting, putting the steps in some kind of logical order, uh, based on the information that we have from the GLO as to what the steps are and, and the order that they are in. Um, at the, at the, um, the last meeting, we talked about the need for a, um, redlined dune protection and beach access plan, um, as well as a draft ordinance to amend that plan to include a beach user fee. Um, it was brought to my attention that on our website, there has been a redlined, um, uh, dune protection and beach access plan that one of my predecessors put together, um, but was never, was never approved. And, um, so I, um, I sent to you three different versions. One was the version that is on file with the GLO. Um, and then I also sent you that redline version that exists on our website. And then my version that cleaned up that redline and made a couple of other additions, uh, to include a, the beach user fee. Um, so I've been in there, you do with a ton of information because I wasn't sure what was gonna be useful for this discussion and, and what we needed to do to, to keep moving a little bit. Um, so I guess I'll just go over the timeline that I put together and try to help you understand by thinking behind it. And the very first one is that the, the step that we are at to, to keep this moving is to submit to GLO for informal review, um, a redline version of that dune protection and beach access plan. Uh, a draft ordinance that, that, that the city council believes we need that calls for the addition of a beach user fee, which is an amendment to our plan. And then the draft beach user fee, also for, uh, user fee plan for GLO comment.
The general ordinance. Would that, I, I mean, I know our whole plan needed tweaking. It's the redline version on the website and hence your version. So when we do a draft ordinance, is that to adopt that proposed entire plan? And then that plan, one of the sections of it is the beach user fee, right? I'm asking for clarity here. I'm, I'm trying to gain an understanding of.
In the packet is the draft ordinance that I've put together.
Yeah.
Um, and what it, what it's saying is that essentially the city council believes, um, is asking for amendment to our beach access and dune protection beach access plan.
Okay.
To include a beach user fee. And, and if you look at our current plan, um.
Out on the GLO?
Uh, I. I don't know that, do, um. Uh, here is a, here is the redline version. This will work for what I would like to say. There is a section entitled beach user fee. In the, in this section, public beach, I have a redline version, I included the beach. I, I really need the original version. I'd get to see where I, um, but should I have a, there. No, that's my version. I'm not getting them very well. I guess I could just go outside. Because like I said, it is on all, uh. Sorry, it should be a little better compared. It should be in twenty-three. I hate to look back over. I know it's on our, in access. It is on our website, and there it is. Okay. So, the current. Person that you will see that there is a place that are, that says essentially, we don't, we don't, we have the right to do it, but we don't have one right now.
Okay.
Um, and, um. Yeah, so. Can't find the, the exact wording of the law for this, there.
Beach.
Beach user. So we have this section already in our dune access plan that talks about that. Jamaica Beach may charge beach user fee.
GLO has on file has that in.
It has this too. It just says, we don't charge one right now.
Right.
Um, and it says, says no public beach user fee is charged. Um, and we may only impose a public beach user fee in accordance with their rules. So all of those things are in place. So what we will be doing is asking them to amend basically the direction to add the beach user fee plan that we are proposing. That's what the, that's what the ordinance is asking. Um, so they will see the draft ordinance, they will see the draft beach user fee plan. They will also see the redline version of the dune protection and beach access plan. And they will make informal comments on all three. Um, and then. And I believe I'm prepared to send that to them tomorrow, if you, if you feel, if you feel that we're ready to do that.
For that informal meeting. Um, I apologize if I have not looked enough. I read what you drafted completely. But I didn't look close enough at what GLO has posted as our official beach access plan. Um, where will we cover how we're going to park?
That is in, that is in the beach access, but that is in the beach user fee plan.
And they, they agree that that's where that will be?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of, is that, you know, we didn't need to further amend our beach access plan because how we're going to require parking, um, needed to be amended as part of that plan?
Yes, that, uh, um, that kind of is all, uh, like.
So as we put our draft ordinance together, I wanted to make sure we.
Yeah, you will see it right here in this, it will spell out, um, the parking schedule, when, you know, and, and like I said, they will make comments about all of, all of those things.
Right.
Um, on an informal basis. So.
Yeah.
This is, um, we're not inacting anything. We're just, we're just.
Yeah.
Putting our work in front of the GLO and say, here's what we got so far. Please provide comments. And that, and that's, uh, so I would expect them, that they would be able to comment rap? I'll say no. Somewhat quickly, I would think thirty days or less.
Yeah.
And.
Well, they've always been good in the past.
Yes.
At that, answering our questions rapidly.
And they are. And, and I have reached out to them because at the last meeting, we talked about some kind of, um.
Yeah, question and answer.
Question and answer, whatever, some kind of, whether, um.
Presentation.
Presentation. And, and she said absolutely she would come and present to us, um, in a structured environment, um, such as a city council meeting.
Not a free-for-all.
Not exactly, right. And, um, and so on my timeline, I, um, on September twenty-sixth, I put a GLO presentation that is purely abstract. I've not asked them that if they would be available on Thursday to twenty-sixth, or if that's even what we wanna do. But, but that's, um, I think we'll be far enough along in the process that we can, we can be thoughtful about what that, what information we want. They also recommended a, um, an FAQ, which I, I think is an excellent idea.
Yeah.
And the, um, the beach user survey, I think we can pull some questions from that, from the comment section.
Yeah.
Put some together. They have, they said if we submit them the questions, they will answer them. Um, and then I can put together a, an FAQ that we can post on our website and social media. Um, you know, I, I'm sure council probably has specific questions they'd like to know, or they're hearing from citizens. And if we could compile those questions, get, you know, get good solid answers from the GLO. And it's not our speculation or what we think we heard the GLO tell us. Um, then we can, we can put that out for, uh, the citizens to, to be able to read. And, and if there needs to be follow-up, if they say, if one question sparks another question, or an answer sparks another question, I think we can, I think we can follow up with that and, and, um, and, and proceed in that direction. And then, uh, like I said, I'm kind of anticipating the last meeting in, in September. That would, that would give Michelle enough time to schedule to be able to come down and visit with us.
So we would, we would envision that to be a presentation from the GLO. And, um, I, I suppose we could, uh, through technology, we could have a section on the website where people post questions. And if they weren't answered in the frequently asked questions, just trying to figure out how we can make the presentation by the GLO comprehensive enough to address most people's concerns and questions. And I agree that the pre-curl format, um, is not the best method to communicate information.
I don't think it's a long participation.
Yeah.
They've indicated that that would not be the purpose.
Yeah. Charlie, we can, once we pick a date, we can decide, um, on what format can best address citizens' concerns and questions.
And that's what it's all about.
Yeah.
Right. Um, I have targeted October tenth, that's the first meeting in October, uh, to bring back a final ordinance for council approval. Which would be, we would have received GLO comments and responded to them in that time period, addressed their concerns or. This would just be the ordinance, um, council approve to say it's in the city's best interest to amend the beach access plan to include a beach user fee. And, and that's what, that, um, that's what that would officially do. And then that would start, um.
The official GLO comment.
Yeah, then we would submit to GLO for formal review, the final, um, uh, dune protection, beach access plan, and the ordinance. And, and I have question marks because I don't know, they, um, they said, uh, it had, um, it will be put out for, on, on the, for review for thirty days for people to comment, and then they will.
Well, first there's an official, they get back, I thought we give it to GLO for official review. They submit, I thought then they submitted any final questions they.
Okay, so.
I thought there was one more tweak in there, there's not.
Here is, here is the, here is the, the wording from the GLO. So, GLO review, um, city council passes a local ordinance adopting a plan amendment. Plan amendment and approved ordinance are provided to GLO for formal review. They review the plan amendment and determine if it's consistent with the requirements of state. They review the plan amendment and determine if it's consistent with the requirements of state law and provides the city with a comment letter with suggested modifications if needed. If plan amendment is determined to be consistent with state law, an initial rulemaking action is posted in the Texas Register with thirty-day public comment period. After comment period, the GLO is required to provide written response to each of those comments."
Yes.
So, um, they did say it, process generally takes six to nine months depend, but depends on how many comments are received and how many they have to respond to. Um, so, that's kind of, that's kind of what we're looking at.
All right, but there is that step where if we send them the plan and if they deem it's not consistent with state...
And then we'll, then we'll still have some work to do.
Then, then they bring it back to us. If they deem it's consistent, but they still want to see a few things changed, it comes back to us.
And with a formal letter.
Yeah, with a formal letter about suggested amendments.
Yeah.
And then it... So, that iteration could be in there, where they send it back to us with some proposed amendments.
Yeah, that will, that will add to this whole timeline. Yeah.
Um... That's what I wasn't sure about.
Yeah.
Is when we send it to them...
It's always possible, it's gonna be back and forth.
Yes. Uh, yeah, 'cause then I know once it gets posted on the register, they've got a long time to answer.
So, that, uh, um, and then the rest of the things that I've included are, are things that, um, uh, or parking vendor, we, we will need to have a, a vendor or a partner, you know, to be able to electronic solution to, um, for, um, issuing the, issuing the permit for the day and things. So, there's some of that stuff that needs to be cleaned up. The beach restoration, as we know, is still going to be taking place, and I'm projecting that somewhere in the December timeframe, December, January. Um, we'll have to, I can work around that. Um, as we talk in our budget workshop, doing restoration, you know, I'd like to do something to, um, to clean up the beach and, and put in some kind of physical barrier for the dunes, uh, install signings, there will have to be some signs that, installed. All of that needs cleaned up, so, um, you know, our target, my target date was the first of March because then, this, then we're going to get hit with spring breakers real quick after that. I don't know that, depending on how long GLO takes, I don't know that we can...
Achieve that.
Achieve, achieve that.
Maybe we can get it done more early, you know, start of summer.
Yeah, but, um, so, that's just kind of, like I said, I put this together to just spur some conversation and, and hopefully, uh, kind of keep us moving forward. So, I'm just, uh, yes, I need to, your council's input.
I don't see why we can't submit, have to submit the draft and get that going right away. I mean, it doesn't hurt to, it doesn't cost anything to get them to look at it and have that informal review.
Um, is that something we've got to go on to do?
I, I don't believe so.
It doesn't, it doesn't require a vote, so we're just trying to hear a means of buying direction.
I'm just, I'm looking for a consensus, but, you know, no concrete outcome from sitting here.
That's right, that's right, that's right. There's no concrete outcome.
I think we should inform her, that's my opinion.
Like I said, I believe I'm prepared that tomorrow, you know, that I'd be able to forward this on.
Get the bottom line on that timeline.
That's it. That's what we said at the last meeting. And that's what he's done here, make a, a reading schedule. Keep us moving forward.
Yeah, 'cause he knows we could make that timeline for spring break.
Well, I, I'll be honest, if, if we, if we don't get a couple of these like the October tenth, you know, then I, then I don't think we make the spring break deadline. She's just, time's creeping up on us and, and it's just...
Yeah.
Things move at the speed of government sometimes.
I appreciate you doing this, this is a really good timeline.
I want it, I want it.
This is the crystal.
Yeah, that's the crystal pattern. They're all critical problems, I understand. You need to worry about this.
Well, as more of the discussion will need to be fleshed out about what are some of those amenities or other things that, you know, we've, we've talked about Dune Restoration projects, we've talked about, you know, other things like that. Those are things that still need to be fleshed out, but they don't directly affect this part of it. Yeah.
Really? And another thing that I know GLO commented on at one point, um, and I don't know if it's a request or a requirement, is that, uh, you know, we intend, the plan right now is to use an app like they do on Seawall and in downtown Galveston for your parking. So, you know, we'll have a sign that says, "Here's your code of place," and our police officers will have the app on their phone to verify that that license plate is registered. GLO made the comment at one point during discussions that we needed an alternate for people to pay without using a phone.
Yes, they did say that, in-person payment. And we got, we need to reply to that when we make our comments now.
That's what I...
We need to address it, we have to address our comments.
We don't have that in this thing ready to go to a time.
No.
Do we need, do we need to add in there that, that we will work with local bankers to find the optimum way of alternate payment?
Really?
Or do we just need to say people...
We, we will know, um, we at least know that if we don't, that's going to be a comment that we get back there.
Okay.
And it still gives us time to think about...
Okay.
What that...
Looks like.
What that could look like.
We'll give our shot at it, and whatever they do.
I mean, I know there's multiple beaches where the, the convenience stores are, are happy to sell those 'cause it gets people into their store. So...
But actually, GLO doesn't look favorable on that.
Oh, they don't?
They do not.
'Cause you have to get out of the car and it's...
No, no, it's just the third party handling the money.
Oh, okay. Not as trustworthy.
Exactly, it's just not good.
Well, the beach is on three thousand five, there's someone collecting the payment before getting on that beach, on Galveston Beach.
And so, and Crystal Beach, and has had, has great success of having their vendors, you know, their, their, um, shopkeepers and stuff being able to do that. Um, you know, hopefully, people would be honest about it, so, um, anyway.
We have time to think about that.
But that will be something with, again, on those...
Flush out.
We still got to figure that out.
Yeah, yeah, there's still flush out to do. All right. So, I, I, uh, I hope you heard mine or Kendall, which is, yeah, let's submit it.
I'll package it up and get sent tomorrow.
Yeah, I do. Perfect, perfect.
Okay, good.
Next thing on the agenda is a discussion and consideration of future water projects. Do you have a motion to discuss future water projects?
Uh, I want to discuss water projects.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Um... So, Kendall, I'm going to kick this off and then you can jump in.
This is the two-part thing, right?
Yes, so... We had a discussion back, uh, can't remember when now, where we went over, do we want to, I think it was in your first meeting with new council, where we opted to not sell our system. And, uh, and the agreement was, you know, that we would move forward, we're working on plans to get our infrastructure where it needs to be. So, um, Mercer Engineering, our, uh, what do you call them? Uh, engineering, their engineer record. So, we asked them to provide the cost estimates to do two things. First of all, to take all the rest of the water lines that need to be replaced, which is everything in the city, although this does not include beach side. So, it does not include anything south of three thousand five. It's everything north of three thousand five. And, um, just do one big engineering, do all the engineering for it and get the TCEQ approval for that engineer design. And that gives us the ability to see the overall, kind of gives us the ability to optimize the entire flow and layout of the city. And then we can pick and choose which portions of that we choose to implement. So, they provided that cost estimate of three hundred and...
Fourteen thousand dollars.
Thank you, Gil, can't always come on you. Three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to engineer everything. Now, this is not the total management cost for the project. This is the engine that is required to get TCEQ approval. Um, as we carve out projects, like we want to do the entire down Jolly Roger and every street off of Jolly Roger, you know, we might carve that off as one project. Um, we will still have to engage an external source, most likely it would be Mercer again, to help us bid that project and then to project management, to oversee it and to provide the necessary inspections. They have the qualified inspection inspectors with TCEQ credentials. So, that, that part will still be, have to be a part of each of those projects. But, uh, anyway, we can also continue like we're doing, carve out little sections and just do one piece at a time. We asked them to provide that as a big picture. Um, the estimate on what the rest of our water line projects will be, uh, is about six million dollars, between six and six and a half million dollars to finish the rest. So, at a three hundred and fourteen thousand dollar bid on a percentage basis, that, that number is very much in line, in fact, it's less than I would expect it to be on a cost of engineering from an overall project perspective. Um, then the other piece we looked at is, um, to benefit the city's water supply and overall water pressure and flow. If the city's currently not looped, it comes in at Buccaneer and Eight Inch Main, and then at Jolly Roger, it splits and feeds each side of the canal through, through a combination of mains, uh, through some six-inch water, biohydric water mains, as well as our old two-inch lines. But what happens is when you do that at dead end, you, you basically are limited to the total amount of flow you can get. You can only get the flow that will transfer down a six-inch line. Well, an eight-inch line covers almost, uh, it's another, what, fifty percent of the flow per hour squared? And then you ratio that, so if you look at a three-inch, a four-inch diameter versus a three-inch diameter, three squared is nine, four squared is sixteen, so that relative percentage tells you how much flow difference there is. So, what we had coming in at an eight-inch, if we looped the city so that we had a way for water to go both directions and feed the end of the city from both sides, we almost double our flow.
We have two Christmas trees, we need a reef.
Yes, that's exactly right, that's exactly right. Um, and so, the, uh, if, if Kyle Bayne is the one that has said, "We will so improve our firefighting capabilities if we loop the city." Well, the only way we can loop the city is to go under the canal. So, we asked Mercer to put their best estimates at what they thought that would be, and that's the two hundred and one thousand dollars. Now, that doesn't include engineering for that project. The engineering for that project would be embedded in that overall scope. Um, so, um, today we're just discussing it. Wanted questions on, you know, if, if we wanted to approve both of these routes, doing the entire engineering, and then once that engineering is complete, immediately go out, go for secondary approval, but approval for that looping the city. Um, and then we would continue to look at how we carve out sections of the city to replace the water line, but we have to balance that with our superplant as well, from a, from a funding perspective. Hopefully, our strategic plan should help us...
Irrigation.
Kind of lay out the, the intermeshing of expenditures from criticality, um...
Primary times.
Yeah, yeah, so, but... I wanted to be able to come forward at the next meeting for approval for the overall engineering, understanding that conceptually then we would also be going for approval for that looped line in the near future. So, um, like I said, this is discussion on what do y'all think? What are your, what are your thoughts? What else would you need to see? What, we would be sole sourcing the engineering, which by state law we're allowed to do for professional services.
I think that, my experience managing a bunch of projects, knowing the whole scope before you go into it is very critical. And just figuring out each piece as you go, they don't always connect together, so I think the, uh, even though it's painful, we all knew that infrastructure was going to be painful. The engineering of the whole system to find out what we need is the best practical.
And, and how do you feel about sole sourcing Mercer? Mercer's done a good job for us in the past, they've been there, and, uh, and they, they understand it better than anybody. We do, we do gain a, uh, benefit of knowledge. If we go out to, to someone else, they're going to learn the system again.
Yeah.
They already know a lot of the problems.
You don't have to start over.
Yeah.
When we originally signed along with Mercer, were there competing quotes against theirs? And how did they stack up to that?
It was RFP.
Oh, so how are the, how did they...
For my time, certainly.
It was, I, I'm not aware of who else bid or provided estimates.
How about that? I... The thing is... We have a lot ahead of us, and I thought the purpose of this strategic plan was to develop a five-year plan.
It is.
Two, three, five. I'd be more comfortable, we have, this is a great discussion, and we need to have, and we need to get all these different ideas out and on the table. But I'd be more comfortable we had our strategic plan, our five-year plan, but there's many other things that have to be listed, all right? And we need to time those over the years. We need to develop a cost estimate for each one of them, see what our spend is going to be for the next five years, okay? And then deciding, Hansel, which ones have priority. And before we make some quick decision that we're not really forced into, because we do have time, I would like to see us have our strategic plan in place, understand the five-year plan, develop some estimates for the cost of each step, just like, just like your predecessor did, with a five-year plan and for the award system. Then we can decide, maybe we do three or four together, right? But until we get the whole nut down, right? I, it just, I'm not a, I'm more of a ready, aim, shoot, all right? Than a ready, shoot, aim, all right? Does that make sense to council?
Well, we're not voting mainly tonight anyway, it's, it's just all just...
It's just a discussion, but that, the process, you know what I'm saying is...
Yeah, the, and this is also...
The process, the, the whole city.
I mean, I, I, I agree we need to aim.
And this...
But, uh, but I also don't think we have the time to, uh, to tune in our gun to win the...
You don't think we have to have a good strategic plan? We have a five-year, we have to develop all that.
You missed that, you missed that. We're meeting September fifth.
Yeah.
Oh, great. Okay, sure. I'm sitting here thinking, geez, we're running...
It's, it's right around the corner.
No, we're, we recognize that these two need to be tied together.
And we don't really need to make any decisions until we do.
I think what you say makes sense, Gil, but also at the same time is, well, this, it just, in my time I've lived here, it just keeps getting delayed, it keeps getting pushed back. It's just, okay, next time, or next year. It's just, okay, next time or next year.
Oh, no.
And I'm thinking, people, this is a big hot topic for our citizens. And I just, that's, I'm a citizen and I, and all the years I've lived here.
It just gets
It just gets, it gets further kicked out. I think, and I know what you're saying, Gil, and I completely agree with you. But at the same time, I'm thinking, this is
We did do this, this process and installed five different, you know, brand new water systems all front end of this, of the city.
So the five year plan, I thought, oh, we gotta wait five more years or
To drop the whole team in at one time?
No, not saying that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Just a discussion.
Just look at that.
Sure, I agree.
Are we, not considering the whole fix, but the assessment by the engineers themselves, what needs to be
Correct.
So is it, it's, is that a part of what you're saying, Gil, is that number would give us the amount and the amount of work that needs to be done that could go into the planning?
Yes, exactly. And his format, if you look at his proposal for doing this, his format, and he talks about charging the three basic phases.
Yeah.
All we really need to do is, when, can we work with this is, I know, this, this is a format for, for organizing and planning any project that they may do. This is the technique. This is how they do engineering work. So it's a general thing. So we need to have a discussion about specifically in each one of these three phases, what we want to
Yeah.
Not, you know, what we want that we get in each one of these phases if we use this company. Um, and that's where it is. This is just a general thing, how they, how they work with the client to develop the engineering. But it doesn't really give a scope for us.
I think maybe, I think maybe to Gil's point a little bit, um, it would be beneficial if this overall engineering study, that maybe they recommend, you know, we have them approach it as engineering it, the whole thing, but in the, in the phases that makes sense.
Going in.
Well, there, your proposal, there was a one, two, and three in it, right? And the one, the phase one of this was, there's, there's key discussion points that take place after, after that first scope and you, after the first, first
Seventy-eight thousand dollars worth.
Yes, seventy-eight thousand dollars worth. That's where you talk about, okay, now we see the whole big picture layout and have a better understanding of all
That's what I'm saying, we need to have, we need, I think, this is great, and there we talk about the overall. But there's some other things in here on our strategic plan and the water system. One of the things bothering me is this asbestos cement pipe man. I found out when you had to, what we call it, the monstrous leak over by your house. You know, when you, that, that was a, a problem with the asbestos, asbestos cement man. And then we had another one over here in Buccaneer where we had shift in, what's the ground or something? And it was shared off that pipe. The asbestos cement pipe that we have was installed ages ago, like the little three inch, two inch diameter gray pipe that we really do need to replace.
Yes, I know.
This is the fault of the same category.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's old, it's way past its life span, man. What does Mercer, what does the engineer, what do we do with this? This is a big cost thing that we need to factor in.
Yep, that's right. And that's why we, it's kind of like what Brandon pointed out. If we look at engineering the entire thing, then yes, it's a big dollar amount you have to spend upfront.
Yeah, I'm all for engineering it all at one time. But the way we, you know, where it, where it addresses our concern, which is the pipe, it's gonna be, it will become, right, a step.
I'm sorry, I'm
In other words, what you're talking about. Structuring it in these different stages.
Yeah, in the, however many, however many different projects we think
Yeah, it will become a project. It could become a project.
My, my expectation is that we would come out of this with, let's say, five projects with cost estimates per project.
Yes.
Exactly.
That's right.
And, and that's, that's where we, you know, you, you work with them and you develop the scope.
Yeah.
Following the way that they do their work.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to engineer a plan and then I have to come back and guess at what the next project is.
Yeah.
And we can just, they will get, we can get some preliminary things that we can use to front end and kind of ourselves develop some estimates. Like on this, now, and a point on that, and I, I spent some time on this, as you can tell. I really liked the way they approached the work.
Yeah, I did too. We gave us step points in between and, and we can call out in more detail what we want for each of those spaces.
We really didn't have our own scope.
What the
And how it works.
Yeah.
And when we get reviews, you know, what percent complete we get reviews. And when, and they need to have an actual schedule or some kind of, you know, like, when do they go to, is it, we do people? TCEQ, my colleagues?
TCEQ.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
Pretty good. When, when do they go, when they get their approval and stuff like that?
Well, we have to decide how we're breaking up the, it has to be fully engineered before they can go to TCEQ.
Yeah, but I think you want to make sure that in there somewhere.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, it was in the original request. And also with TCEQ approval, we did find out that if we engineer the entire thing and get TCEQ approval for it all, that we could break it up into projects and deliverables. And the approval would stay valid indefinitely. So that if it takes us ten years to get it all done, we don't have to go re-engineer and get re-approved. It's not going to, that approval's not gonna expire.
That's right.
But that's the point of, of having them do the engineering on any different projects, so we can do that from the very start. We talked about how we want it computed from the very start when we're looking at it.
Yeah, we have to look at everything.
You know, and one of the things is I see this estimate for the reef. I see this estimate for the reef. And yeah, it's a, and this is one of the problems. These are things that can get us right now. Um, but this thing is, is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the construction. And, and, and says very nicely, "If you have any further questions or need more information, please contact me." I, I, I would, I'd like to know, um, for this whole reef, the size, pipe, and linear foot of pipe, if they
You notice, it's, right now, what's proposed is the engineering design of that.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking, we're just, we're not talking about detailed design. We're just talking about a rough estimate based on, I mean, they had to have something to come up with. It's just a rough estimate, size of pipe and linear feet. A rough estimate, linear for the boring and the remaining cost. It's three cost breakdowns that they see in that number.
Okay.
Size of pipe, linear foot, linear for the boring, and remaining costs. Just that one number broke down pretty roughly.
Okay.
And this will be quite data mined.
Yeah. Well, and that's good points to bring up as we pursue the next step of the discussion. So, uh, and this is in our budget, right?
No.
It's not. For, for next year or next year?
This is
It's in this current year.
Yeah, it's in the current budget, yeah.
That would be very important.
This is in the
We want to make sure we can afford it.
Is that in next year's, is that, is the reef, it next year's budget?
But, uh, we, we did, you know, we did, we did put it in there.
Yes, we did.
So that's
And the overall engineering
But, but I mean, but there's also money in this year's budget, right?
There is.
Actually, both are put in for next year because I wasn't sure when we were gonna get to it.
Yeah. No, we, we put a million dollars in the budget for water.
That's just one big number, but have we got that million divided, broke out, earmarked out?
No, this is the part that it would be earmarking it out.
So you've got a million dollars up now, we can call it anything.
I think so.
Yes.
The projects, the projects, the projects.
We can call it in, in this year's budget.
Some of the projects. We had a million dollars for water.
Yeah.
What do we have, what do we put in for just periods for treatment line?
For this year?
No, for next year's budget.
Seven hundred and fifty?
No.
So we just got big numbers, you're saying, but
Right. Place holders.
I put in, um,
Let me make sure.
Like I said, in this, in the current budget right now, we have a million dollars.
For water.
For water. Uh, that's not Yeah, sorry. That's the wrong Um, so, um, three hundred and fourteen thousand for engine, I put in five hundred and sixty-four thousand, which is the three hundred and fourteen for the overall engineering and two hundred and fifty thousand for boring under the canal. Um, and their, their estimate was two oh one.
Yeah.
So I have to build in a little bit of
You got that. That's on our, because you have really a three hundred and fourteen thousand on the packet that we've got.
Yeah.
So I thought that that was probably related to
And then, and then on the wastewater, it's five hundred thousand for plant improvements and two hundred and fifty thousand for manual extensions, so, for next year.
Good. I'm in budget mode today, so that's why I want to make sure we can afford that.
Yeah, and we're, and we're working right now on getting, um, enough information to scope the electrical needs at the sewer plant.
Yeah. And we are paying for that now on, through, through the fifteen thousand we have per branch or?
No, this is, this is, uh,
A separate
It's an eight thousand dollar agreement with, um, Mercer Controls, um, to, to do the evaluation. And they've already been here and already visited one time to, and then they're looking at
Separate, separate purchase law. A separate agreement.
Yes.
Whatever happen we're doing.
It's not to exceed eight thousand dollars.
To get, to get the estimate on what size generator we need, what, uh,
What do you think we need to do electric?
Yes.
Yeah. And, uh, so the five hundred thousand dollars we have in the budget next year for the sewer plant, it is a wild ass guess. It's a wild ass guess.
Well, that's great. But if you have to plug numbers in.
Well, uh, what, what the size of generator we need
Now are we gonna bet enough?
We have to do the switching station and everything.
I hope it's more than we need, but I'm not, I'm not convinced that it is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm
And that's wrong, what we did.
So, uh, it was, so that's the
What would be wrong if we don't bet?
And hopefully, hopefully, we will, we will have a little bit of indication so that we can plug some better numbers in with our strategic plan as we look at overall spend on the systems, uh, across the next five years. Okay, um,
Can we say, just follow up that, you're for the three hundred thousand dollar engineering survey and that helps us get the five ten year plan, or you're not?
I, I don't think it's, I think it's gonna be a lot more than that. Once we sit down and do the scope and we start
I thought that was a great
It'll rain for soon.
Right? Three hundred thousand dollar engineering, trace call, get approved.
No, that engineers, that, that will result in an approved plan by TCEQ.
Yeah, DCO, that includes DCO.
That's detailed DCO. What it doesn't include is engineering or external contractor
Pretty things like survey and
Sure.
Okay.
No, it includes the survey necessary to do the engineering. It doesn't include any surveying necessary to actually go officially bid the project and break it.
Yeah.
It includes surveying. Uh, like I said, what
I don't have extra services, but
Project management
Is that once we sit, every time I've ever done one of these, the client had one expectation of what it would look like, the engineer had another, and they sat down and they developed the scope. And I've been on both sides of this. And so I just, I know that, that by doing that, if we sit down with them, we will be able to bet these numbers and we'll be much more comfortable. Once we agree on scope, this is a good, good start. No question.
Well, I'm just saying here, engineering and survey for Eastlands is ten thousand dollars now.
That's for the reef. I was asking about the
Oh, yeah.
That's for the reef. And you'll have these same charges that have to be added to and taken into account of the cost. You know.
Well, there will be, that's right. There will be, there will be some numbers added, uh, as we break out each of the projects that are not included in the overall engineering costs.
There'll be, there'll be all of these things listed here on this reef proposal minus the engineering design. I mean, for each however many projects you have.
You've got it.
Yeah.
Maybe add it to the
And the other thing, just, just so the citizens are aware, details they probably don't care about. But new TCEQ rules, uh, where there's a lot of optimization that has to take place on the size of line we use. Um, when this system was built, we could use much smaller lines and dead end at the end of the streets. Um, also, you could have your line much closer to the sewer line. So our existing pipe goes down one street and over on top of the sewer line and back the other way. That's not allowed anymore. So we achieved looping, like on streets that dead end into a canal, previously by going on the same street, we can't, we can't do that anymore. So there's, there's the potential that we might have to do multiple hoars under the canal so that everything can be looped because TCEQ limits how many dead ends you can have. It's not like we can just feed water down to the end of the street and it stop the pipe. Uh, they were, they require it to be looped, to be flushed and to maintain optimum flow. So, uh, that's also when, we're at a point where we're looking at the whole system.
That's the benefit.
And engineering, it's like you said, otherwise the pieces might not mesh and we might end up doing a lot more work to achieve approval if we don't kind of do the whole thing at once. Anyway, okay. Well, thanks for the discussion.
Yeah, I'm not concerned with the cost of this. I'm concerned if we get the right scope of work to do it.
So we get what we want.
Identifying all this stuff properly. You know, and our strategic, strategic plan in a five years, this is gonna have to spread out to pay for.
Yeah, absolutely.
So let's get some good numbers.
Okay, uh, I think that closes out my business. Uh, I don't really want to add to the mayor's report this day, other than staff has been doing an amazing job of keeping us going, uh, and, uh, doing all the extra work that the storms required of us. So once again, I should shout out to the staff. And also, it's a little early, but a reminder of our health fair event in September. Put that on your calendars. Tina has a great, a great lineup. And, uh, the other thing is, a lot of y'all might have seen it, but it is, our city is in its major birthday day. And I, and I'd say we contributed to some of the three years on his head, but. Not me here. And also, we are potentially facing board, you know, our, our floor was robbed. And so it's been replaced. And it, it seems though like rotten areas are popping up in the rest of city policy. We've identified, what Kendall, about six more soft spots that we'll start investigating. So we don't have that money in the budget and we probably will be looking at needing to do an amendment to this year's budget for city adminis, city hall maintenance. Between losing, how many ACs have we lost this year? Four? And now we're losing a floor. Anyway, when, I mean, we all know it's the nature of living on the coast. We also know that if you don't stay super on top of it, it, it all comes at work. It all gonna get worse, yeah. That's right, it definitely dominates the snow loss.
It's always something.
So anyway, that's, that's all I have on my mayor's report. And at this point, we are going to convene to executive session. You guys are welcome to stand.